Committee of the eleven town council, Lord, for the month of October. If everyone will please rise. If you have any questions.
Yes, sir.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you this evening. We're so grateful that we can call upon you and know that you hear our voice. We ask God that you would bless our town and bring prosperity to us. We ask God that you would grant us your wisdom, the knowledge and understanding. Lord, that everything be conducted here this evening in faith, Lord, to you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
A pledge to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and the God in this world, where we live in just as for all.
Do we have, does anyone have any items to add to the agenda, council members, that is not on the agenda? Dan, was there somebody going ahead? You never. That is pretty much.
Are we, Cameron, are you planning on talking about the wastewater treatment plan, capital improvement plan tonight?
Not tonight.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? For a second. Further discussion, I favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
We've also received minutes from our regular September meeting, as well as a call council meeting in September. If anyone had a chance to review those. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from those two meetings?
Come on.
For a second.
Second.
Further discussion? All those who favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side. Next item is related to our accounts payable on capital asset. Cameron, are there any bills additionally what was already presented to council for tonight?
I think Scott, did you have something that needed to be approved that you may add some more?
Shane provided those quotes for the, the padding on the steel beams and gymnasium.
For BSN Sports?
Yes, everybody should have a copy of that. I'd ask that you add that to the council bill, council pay on there. And I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
The bills with, with this addition?
Yes, sir.
Motion to second to pay the bills with the addition?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side. I'm out, call us in a joint, public hearing with our eleven planning commission as advertised. Mr. Chairman, do you have a form?
We did, Mayor.
Okay. At this time, we'll turn it over to the chairman of our planning commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for reading the amended application, Mr. Mayor.
An application submitted by Ron Barrett and Wayne Music to review and amend the existing permit. The property is located at 1930 East Main Street in the Seaborn Commercial District. All adjacent property owners have been notified.
All right, thank you. Mayor, members of council, this time we'll open up, thank Mr. Music is here. Then we will hear from those filing the application and then if we want to do opposed application.
Kyle filled out the paperwork, is it okay if you come to the court?
True.
All right, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Basically, we, we need the area right behind the garage to park cars. It's our, a little spot, it does take a third or a fourth of the time to move the cars to there than it would somewhere else and move them back and forth and be power required or whatever, or disassembling and waiting on parts or waiting on the customer to make a decision or whatever. And that's primarily what that area is used for. And that area was originally in front of the second building that was on that lot when we moved there. And that's the area that we want to be able to continue to use to park cars. So we were advised to seek a, an issue onto our permit there to allow us to be able to park cars.
The second building now living is gone, does not mean that the first building can be divided into two buildings. There's one building with multiple rooms. And we would just like to restate that we haven't broken our original condition of use or we will not break our existing condition of use if approved by your committee.
The members of planning commission, they'll.
Just a minute, does any members of the planning commission have a question? Doesn't want to ask, Mr. Music?
Not, not right now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this time we'll open up any opposition for the condition of use permit to come up to the podium.
Mr. Duffey, council members. I'm Gene Passer, I live right behind this building that is in question. And the property that we are discussing is not the building, the number two building. The number two building, Mr. Barrett done away with. I even addressed that with Mr. Barrett, or Mr. Doughty, he come out to the house. We discussed that he would have the town manager to look into it. Okay, the building was taken away because we were concerned about the kids at the church coming over and playing on that roof and half of it done falling in. All right, let's forget that part, that was taken care of. Now, the problem that we have with this. There's forty some vehicles parked down there, they've been there since July, or January the fourteenth of 2013. A lot of them. Council members, if you want to go and look, half of them don't even have tags on. The other half, the tags are out of date. Okay, our problem is, when we set in the meeting to allow the permit to be provided, Mr. Fletcher himself, I can read it from the minutes, which you all have a copy of the minutes. If you go to section ten, part B. Mr. Fletcher asked, where will these vehicles be parked? Mr. Music himself made the statement that the vehicles would be parked either inside or in front of the building. They're not being done this way. Okay? Now my problem though is, was this permit provided to Ron Barrett prior to the town council meet or after? Cause it shows in there but provision showing about this. And that, my question is, I worked for thirty-five years as a federal mine inspector. I'm gonna ask you all, tell me something. What's seventy-five-two-hundred of the thirty C F R being due you all? Now, the same as these provisions are to us as taxpayers in the town eleven. We didn't know nothing about no provisions. We don't know what a provision is and I couldn't tell you today what these provisions are. So, and what I'm questioning, was this permit provided prior to the meeting on January the fourteenth of 2013? If it was, because when we agreed to allow this business to go in, and you read, it was addressed. And that's what we agreed on. When this was over with, we were through with the meeting, we got up and left. Then we come back and I asked for permission about this permit. And when I pulled it up, me and Mr. Fletcher, my wife, we read it. Here it's got to the front, to the sides, and there's nothing saying anything about the back. We didn't even know there was such provision that was provided. So I mean, I'm standing on.
The initial one.
Right. The initial permit is not being followed by the guidelines of the people that the town asked us to come for that meeting and attend and give our permission for this permit to be provided. And so I have to.
I just want to just elaborate from a few things here. We're talking about revitalizing this town, you know? That's all we hear and that's great, I think it's wonderful. But you know, when you have this sitting in front of your house, it really makes it look bad. I mean, that's just the facts. If we're gonna revitalize this town, are we gonna revitalize it all the way to the east and all the way to the west? Or are we just gonna do it in the middle of the town? I guess that's my question. As far as Mr. Music and them, I don't know Mr. Music and I don't know his son. I've never been down there, have no, no problem about that. But there are many, many vehicles sitting there. Some of them are tagged, some of them aren't tagged, some are outdated. When they try a vehicle out, they go up our hill and they go back down our hill, they go back up our hill, they go back down our hill. We have kids on that hill in that subdivision. If one of those kids were to get in the road and somebody hit a kid, then it's gonna be worse than what I seen you're telling me about. As I have no beef with Mr. Music at all, none. But I do have a beef with what it makes our property look like. And I think all of you all would have that same, same issue. But the revitalization is what, what I'm really focusing on right now. I want this, I've lived here all my life, as has Gene, and you all know that. I want it to look as nice at my place and we even mow a lot of Ron's area out there to make it look better. The field beside us, the lot beside us, it doesn't get mowed once a year. Right down below us, if you want to come out there and look, you're welcome to. Weeds have grown up. And I were talking about the building right in front of us, that building had to go down because it was a, it was hazard. I mean, it was dangerous. And I think even part of that building still goes down over close to the building that you all were talking about. So if you're parking behind that building, then you probably still own that property that was initially there. I just ask your consideration to it, I appreciate you listening to us. We just want to make our place look as well as everybody else.
Mr. Mayor, may I make one more statement?
Hang on one second. Is anyone else to speak? Mr. Chairman, is there anybody else?
Anyone else to speak against the proposal?
I just enjoy it.
Okay, I think he just agree with what, first of all, does the planning commission have any questions for Commissioner Miss Carter?
Let me ask a question here if I could, lady, make sure I'm on the same page here. Listen, Mr. Miss Carter, if I understand correctly, part of the concern is that needs to be maintained properly, mowed and all that sort of stuff. And the, the other thing you mentioned with the, what, the unlicensed vehicles? I'm not exactly sure what we can do in regard to that, that might be another issue.
I think that's something the planning commission would have any.
Yeah, I think that's another issue. And so I guess what I wonder is, I know everybody's trying to get this thing resolved at some point. Is, are you all happy if they do clean up and keep it maintained and that sort of stuff? Is there any objection on those lines?
I object.
That, that, that'd be okay?
With the back part, I do object. There's trailers back there, there's all, it looks bad, come and look. I mean, it's wide open.
Yeah, so if we, if we, if we put something in place where they had to maintain it, mow it and all that kind of thing, which I'm sure these guys wouldn't mind.
They mow around their building and, and, but there's big weeds growing up.
Yeah, that, I'm prepared to make a motion along those lines if, if that, we think that way would help.
I think before we do, take any kind of motion, we have someone on the, that.
Okay, sure.
Mine is a question, Mr. Commissioner, you have a response to? It's not a statement, it's simply a question. From January fourteenth of 2013 until approximately February of 2018, we're talking five years and a month. There was anywhere from five to eleven vehicles parked between building one, building two. And there was not one mention of this in five years worth of town council meetings. Not one question raised, not one hand raised. But once the second building was torn down, then it became a visual problem.
How do you know that?
Well, because I helped move the vehicles in there.
But how do you know it wasn't placed here?
Because this is the first time anything's been brought to our attention.
To your attention?
Exactly. Nobody brought it to our attention. If it had been raised up in this establishment, then somebody should have communicated with the business owner. When you wait five years, that's just before the building's torn down. This discussion didn't take place until 2019, just when this started. So we're talking a full six years before the problem was brought to our attention. If one thing needed to be addressed, it didn't need to wait six years until one building was torn down. It needed to be addressed.
That's when you could see it.
And needed to be addressed much, much sooner. We haven't broken any rules and we're not going to.
May I speak more?
Come, come on in, don't worry. I'll speak. You say there's no notification. I called Ron Barrett myself, I called the secretary, the property, it looked like a junkyard.
Were you ever arrested?
So he was addressed. Okay? So whatever was standing about him, so he was addressed.
Donning before you go any further and to what, I don't know who he is, what his name is. Ask Mr. Doughty if he wanted to address about this.
Well, I'm not, you know, if he was, he was, that's something the planning commission, we're not.
But I'm not, I'm not saying that, that's not where we're going, that's not what I'm going with.
Well, you come here, Gene, I remember you mentioning it, yes.
You stood, you parked in the pub with your wife and then we addressed the situation.
Yeah, and I passed it on to the planning commission, we dealt with.
Well, you told us that you would address it to the town manager. He would get back with us with the results. To this day, we have never heard a thing from anybody.
Well, Mr. Mitchell went out there, I didn't know that.
He didn't address it with us, though.
We're waiting for minutes.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anyone else have anything else to add? Any members of the planning commission have anything else to add?
If you could, Mr. Chairman, the amendment that they want is specifically what?
The one they want to broke these cars where the building used to be or?
Yeah, my understanding is that it's the back part down that was torn down.
The part where the second building was, we can't even pull vehicles up there because it's an elevated platform with several rocks beneath it. We never intended or want, wish or desire to park vehicles there. We want to put the existing vehicles that we had to move to have the building torn down back where they were. But that's not meaning that they're gonna stay there for long term. Each one of these projects, the longest we've had one back there is approximately six to eight weeks while we're waiting on parks to be ordered or paid for. There is one vehicle back there that is being held because we haven't been paid for it yet. We have it blocked in to protect ourselves, more or less. But that doesn't, that's not where the second building was and it's definitely not beyond the second building. We're only using that area to protect ourselves, to block in one vehicle that hasn't been paid for. That's the only vehicle that's been there longer than the estimated time.
Does that answer your question?
I think so, yeah.
All right, anything further, the planning commission? All right, this time I'll take a motion, we approve the application as presented.
I'll make a motion that we approve it subject to the maintenance issue of the property.
I don't know if we can stipulate that at this time, can we, Cameron, as far as?
Yeah, you can put what conditions you want.
Well, I think, I think.
You must hear what conditions he wants to add on, I mean, he can make his.
I don't, I don't have a problem with what RD's doing, but I think if we're gonna do that this time, in fairness to the Carter's, we need to have some communication, if we put restrictions on it, to make sure that they are maintained and followed and, you know, I don't know, apparently we're not getting all the communication out somewhere. I, I don't know, but if we're gonna amend it, and that's your motion to amend it, we need to follow up on it.
Well, what I mean.
Retain it.
What I, and the amendment is, I wanna try to, this, this ain't gonna be perfect from either side, I don't think. And, but I know both sides are getting frustrated. And what I would, what I would propose is, is we grant, we grant the amendment for a second, but we put a provision in there that they would mow and maintain all the boundaries, you know, and keep it, keep it mowed underneath the vehicles and all that, so it would be more, be more safely. And see, I think that's part of the problem, is it's just appearance is part of it, that, that seems to be some of the issue. But that, that's what, that's what I would propose in the interest of hopefully helping both sides a little bit.
Okay, so that's your motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
All right.
Well, I have a question. I'm not sure if that's gonna satisfy them. What they're talking about, all those vehicles that are there and, I mean, they're tagged and parked in the back? And they say they have to park in the back?
I would say roughly eighty percent of the vehicles that either have expired or no tags on them are in front of the building. Not all, but approximately eighty percent. And the ones that are there without tags are either vehicles that belong to us personally or they are waiting, they are, they are waiting to save their money for repairs as needed. Some people don't have, you know, two thousand dollars for an engine or a transmission that's probably have.
Then why don't they wait until they get the money to bring their vehicles in?
When they're broke down, they can't keep them on the side of the road.
Well, then keep them at their house.
I've got a question to ask you. Where's your rollback or whatever that hauls these in?
I try to, I try to divide my hauling services with multiple services throughout this town to help support other small businesses.
Yeah.
I don't provide a record service, I try to support other small businesses.
No, you all don't, you all don't provide a record service, you provide the air and lock and put the junk out.
How many of the vehicles belong to you personally? Do you have just another question?
I would just like them to show me exactly what they would, that they would accept for them to do.
About five.
Block?
Approximately five, do we have thousands? And some of those are, a couple of those are insured, just not paid.
How many, how many vehicles are sitting out there, Mike?
We've had fifteen probably in the last two days. People, you know, have worked it, so we've got, what did we get out today? Four?
Mr. Music, I'm not gonna interrupt you, but I'm gonna say one thing. You don't live in this town, I think you live in Cleveland, and I don't know that much about you. But you wouldn't want that sitting in front of your house, I mean, you can't tell me that you would. And it looks bad, it's very unsightly. And if we're trying to make this town look better, we've got three different areas that we could talk about if we wanna talk about them.
I personally think that it looks better now than it did when there was no business in there, it was all broken up and rough looking and everything. I, I think, you know, that we've, we've tried to improve it and keep the.
Mr. Ring, I'd like to say one thing. We were told before we came to this meeting that the planning commission had already made a decision to amend.
Well, that's not true.
Well, I hope that it isn't.
I'm on the planning commission, I know nothing about that.
You wouldn't.
Probably maybe not, but.
And that's all I'll go say about, I'm finished.
And my comment that I like to address this. There's forty-one or forty-two vehicles, the ones out front, I have a problem with because it meets the standards that the permit provides. It's the one that come off the hill, we have to face this every day. We look at this trash. They got bags of trash, they pile up on trash day, they don't have a container to put nothing in. And I mean, we're looking at this every week.
Everybody piles up their trash, the place across the road, apartments across the road, every time people pile and weed it.
Eight buildings, all the place, their trash piles three times bigger than ours. And you can probably see it better than the porch.
I've got a question, Mr. Ring, if you don't mind. On the original condition of use permits, it says use property located on nineteen thirty East Main Street for all motor services. Upon the conditions that the use is restricted to the two buildings closest to Main Street. My question there is, originally was there three buildings and the back one down? Or originally was there two buildings and the back building coming up?
There was two buildings and the back building was torn down. The front building is one building with multiple rooms, there are doors internally that make them rooms, not buildings.
Just a, just a minute, Kyle.
I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
From how you all perceived this when you did the first conditional use permit, did you perceive that the structure is three structures?
I don't, I can't speak for the rest of the planning commission, but I did.
Well, that's my, that's my question, cause there's a brick, there's a brick building and then there's a sheet metal garage that they had joined, and he's right, they do a joint, I've never been that far inside, I've been into the office. But my question is, if the wooden one behind was the third building, the conditional use permit states that they can park those vehicles, they're restricted to the front and the sides of the two buildings closest to the Main Street. All I need to know, or what I'm looking for is, are the existing structures there now, is that considered the two buildings you all referring to?
I would be referring to the all three, but my understanding, I didn't know how they were broken up. And, you know, I thought the last building, and this is just me, the last building was where I thought that that was, would be the back part. The one that was torn down.
Was a third, was a third building?
Yes. But I can't speak for how the rest of the planning commission, how they perceived it.
Has the planning commission looked at this property before you make recommendations? Pardon me? Has the planning commission looked at this property before you make recommendations?
I've looked at the property, I've tried to look at all the properties that comes in. I can't say that I do look at all of it, but I think that I've looked at this yet.
I'll tell you what, I'm gonna just, I withdraw my motion, I'm not sure it's actually helping Peters, either side much. I think we may have to reconsider here, but I will withdraw my motion.
All right. To have a motion to approve the amended. To have a motion to approve the amended permit. Mr. Mayor, we do not have a, there's no one to make that recommendation. The amendment will fail for that reason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the council. Have any questions for the planning commission?
Okay, the first permit that they got is still being the same. This is just an amendment, you know, whatever the first permit stands, that's what they have to go by.
The original permit stands. That's the one that stands, man.
Mayor, here's my issue with the first permit. We know how Mr. Rainey feels about the first permit, but is there two buildings down there currently or one standing? That's what, that's, that's the question that I have. If there were three previous and one has been torn down, then what's there currently would be two buildings. And if this permit stands as, as it reads, then they can park on the sides and in front of the two buildings currently there. That's my question. Is, is that two or is that one? Because it's gonna change the outcome of the, of the conditional use permit. I just need clarifications, what I'm looking for.
We done, we done this originally, and I know that they read from what Mr. Fletcher said. I don't know how we put it to the minutes, but I think the town council knows it will be discussed after the parking. It was first amended to the front. Upon discussion, we, we said the sides and the front would be fine. I don't know how or why it's not in there or whatever, but that was discussed here.
Well, that's what's in the minutes, really, from that, uh, from that first permit.
But the back was never really discussed, other than to say you can park on the front and the sides.
That's correct.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think it's a moot point at this point. We don't have a motion, so it'll be over.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of our planning commission. Appreciate you all being here tonight. Thank you for your service to the town. So the original permit, can I tell our attorney, is it?
It's still a favor.
With no action by the planning commission, the original permit remains intact.
Yes. All right.
So along with the original permit, are we considering asking, uh, the Musics to move the vehicles from the rear of the building? Because the conditional use permit states that they don't use the front and sides of the vehicles. Are we gonna ask them as a council to clean up the rear of the property?
I think we do.
What?
I think we did ask, and I'll ask you again.
We did. I think that, what I think, Ryan, and Matt Skerris and Ron and Wayne and Kyle, the back part was viewed by, of course, Ron's property, so he, his building was there. He views the old, the original building with the additions, with, with internal doors. And the white part of that building is attached as one building. When the, at the time the permit was originally granted, the one that was kind of dilapidated on the backside of the property, which Ron took care of himself, I guess tearing it down and hauling it off or whatever was the second building. His mind was, that ran, it was the understanding at the time when this was originally proposed to the planning commission.
Mr. Duddy, can interject?
You can object too.
Interject.
Interject, true.
The building that was directly in front of our house.
Yes.
That building had to come down, number one, for safety reasons. Uh, number two, for health reasons. It was full rats.
Which Ron, as the property owner, took care of.
And Mr. Barrett tore it down.
That's correct.
I have no issue with that. And I want to be known that I have not, he took that down.
Right.
And he had to do it because it was an issue.
And he took the heat risk, that's correct.
And that was the second building?
That was for a time originally, well, it was granted, it was viewed as the second building on the property.
The one that was torn down.
Right, that, that's the original.
Okay, because that's what the, this says. It says that the use of the property for automated services upon condition to use is restricted to two buildings. So that would be that, there are two buildings closest to Main Street. So does that mean that there were other buildings further away from Main Street?
There was, right down below.
Okay, so it says the two, it says two buildings closest to Main Street and restricted to the front and sides of the building.
That's right.
Are they all pending regulations? Or is that what they found?
And as, and as the chairman said, the back was not, I mean, it was copped back, but I don't, I looked, it's not in the permit. It's not, as you said, done. I don't, uh, for some reason, the back part was not addressed.
All we're wanting to do is use about twenty-five foot or so behind the building there that, that we do, are able to keep mowed. I, I cannot physically mow that steep part. I don't have a bush haw or, you know, the ability to mow that. It's not something that you can get over with a mower, or I would certainly keep it mowed. Uh, Ron does mow it once or twice a year with a bush haw, but, uh, I, I can't physically mow that. I'm unable. But all I would like to use is the, I would say approximately thirty feet behind the building to park vehicles that, uh, are either waiting for repair or are waiting to be repaired.
Mr. Duddy, I've got a comment to that. Let's go back to the permit. What does the permit allow? There's nothing in the permit that says parking behind the building. Secondly, this provision was never presented the night that we come out here and agreed to let this business go in. Once it was agreed on that, uh, Wayne could put this business in, our part of it was over with. All you all asked us were, did we agree to let it go in? We got up, we locked up that door. All right, when this permit was rolled up, it was rolled up front and side. We didn't have nothing, we didn't know nothing about the side.
But it happened the same night, Gene.
That's exactly right. Was the permit allowed before the meeting or was it allowed after the meeting?
It's just like tonight, everything was heard at the planning joint meeting that you attended. Planning commission recommended the permit with these provisions to the council.
I never spoke to anyone before that meeting at all, I can promise you. And I did come out here and, uh, I think Mr. Fletcher asked me about parking behind that second building up on the hill. And I said I absolutely had no intention of parking up there. Uh, only the, only the, a small, short distance behind the part that we used for the garage. And, and that's all that we've ever parked. We're just, all we're trying to do is get the paperwork in order to use the same part of the property that we have used since we moved in there. And nothing was ever said about it, as far as we know until last year.
I beg your pardon. The, I didn't, the question I asked, where the vehicles would be parked? And your, your, your comment was, or whoever who was here, would be parked i- in the front of the building.
Right, here you go, burner. And that's burner. That's the minutes. It can tell you exactly what was said. And Mr. Musics wanted to plug this quote.
Here, here's the question I asked, if you wanna read it.
I'm here.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a question. Where in these minutes is it talk about those provisions? I'm, I'm confused.
This section ten, uh, part B, I, I understood the question to be asked that where would the work be performed? And, and that I said that with, most of it would be done inside, but some of it might be done outside? Because we don't always want our vehicles on the inside, especially in pretty days and pretty weather, you know?
Wayne, is that in the minutes? I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
I, I, I don't see it exactly. But I say that's how I took, I'm just saying that's how I took the question when Mr. Fletcher-
That ends the conversation.
I thought, I thought you said, asked about the, uh, where would they be worked on?
Okay, we hear you.
To work together in your house. I mean, if this is what you're, is this what you're looking at? If I'm looking at part B, section ten, part B, Mr. Bernard Fletcher was present to request information regarding where the vehicles awaiting service will be parked. Mr. Music stated that most vehicles would be inside and that only a few vehicles would be parked along the front of the property.
That's correct, yes.
And those were comments that Mr. Music made in the town council meeting.
Wayne, the, the only thing that I have to go on, as I stated last time you were here, is these minutes and the conditional use permit. And in the minutes that we were given, as we just said, you stated they would be parked along the front of the property. Only a few would be in the front of the property and inside. And then going back to the original conditional use permit, again, that's all we have to go on. I just, I can't, nowhere in there does it say that the rear of the building, I mean, it specifically defines the front and the sides of the building.
Our business is, our business has grown a lot since then.
Absolutely.
You know, and I went from a couple of people to five and six people working there, so, uh-
Absolutely. And you do great work and that doesn't go unrecognized. But there's several vehicles back there and there's plenty of room at the billboard toward Long Johns and-
There is, Brad, but that takes a lot of time. That takes a lot of time out of your day to move a vehicle all the way down there and to move it back when you're ready to work on it.
I understand.
I'm just trying to say, if the more productive I can be, the faster I can get a vehicle in and out there and have less vehicles there.
I understand. And I, you know, I, I hate that, and maybe I just view it this way, but I know nobody wants to put you out of work. I mean, out of taking your time away from work, moving vehicles. I think all the Kaisers and their neighbor, Mr. Fletcher, are requesting is just that we be good neighbors.
I try my best to be a good neighbor, uh, you know, and I, I, I wanna be a good neighbor. That's, that's the top of my list.
Absolutely.
Is to try to help everyone in town. That's my goal.
Is it, is it too much to ask though, to move the, I think there's, I was there yesterday, I believe there's seven vehicles and an old, an old Jeep that's torn apart and a trailer.
That Jeep, it was gonna be a winter time project. That trailer belongs to the Natural Gas Company here in town. Now, we're fixing for them. That's not the same trailer. There've been three trailers there in the last month. Uh, I, you know, that was brought in there to be worked on. It's a matter of when we can get to it. It's not the same trailer. It's, there've been three different trailers. There are all of them flat trailers. We're gonna wax it.
Is, my, just my question, is, is it too much to ask to, you know, move those vehicles? And keep that area clean? And I understand the hillside, you can't mow. You know, Mr. Barrett might could find somebody to weed these that for him, but-
Excuse me, Brad, but that is a problem. The weeds are growing up unreal. I mean, they're high. Mr. Music knows that.
I agree.
I mean, it looks bad. I have nothing against Mr. Music and I know he gets a lot of business.
Those weeds are full of groundhogs and rats and rats and-
They are. Yes, they are. There's everything down there and no one would want that in front of their house.
I, I wouldn't want that either. I don't, you know, I, I agree with you, but I can't, I can't mow that.
That's all I'm saying. And you all can do what you wanna do. Uh, I don't think any of you all would want that. And I don't, I'm not trying to take anything away from Mr. Music whatsoever, but-
I will do my best, Brad, to clean that up and I will try and get along the brush hogging, bush hogging again and everything. If y'all would just see fit to let me use just a little bit of room behind there for the vehicles that I need up to that piece of equipment that Ron still has there, that, what is that, that tall plant he's got there? Just from there, two car widths wide up to the corner of the door, that will give me a place to park stuff when I can't get paid that I have to block it in. You, you understand if I, if I, if I park it out front and I try to block it in with other vehicles?
But Mr. Music-
Then that's, makes, makes people can't get on my lawn.
But with all the other vehicles that are sitting there with no tags or anything, why can't those be taken off somewhere or?
I did get rid of three in the last thirty days and I have, I have got plans to get them to free.
Then that would give you more room to do what you need to do instead of putting them in the back.
I agree. There's a lot of those vehicles on mine, but even those down toward Long Johns, they are customers of mine. They are trying to sell them to other people for parts or whatever. Uh, and I have got two moved down there, you know, in the last thirty days. Uh, I, I, I try to move things as quick as I can.
I, 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 I understand that.
How many?
But again, Mr. Duddy, I go back to revitalization of this town.
How many of those vehicles that are untagged and don't have a valid inspection have been there sixty days or longer? Approximately better than fifty percent of the ones that don't have tags on them because of that reason. The customer's either deciding if they're gonna repair it or not, or they're trying to sell it on their own. We're not selling it on their behalf. We're allowing it to sit on the property on their behalf until it is sold by the-
I would say roughly eighteen, okay?
Why don't you ask a few questions? Why would you take an in vehicles that you can't get repaired? They gotta sit there for all this time. Why don't you make appointments and bring them in as you can take care of them? Instead of parking them down there in front of our, uh, subdivision?
I do do that on, on most thing, you know, a lot of things, but I think, uh, when you do ma- mechanic work, I mean, it's not a jiffy loop.
Wayne, do you think I'm a fool? My dad worked for thirty-seven years for Lynch Motor Company and he never turned a screw that I wasn't said and never said to him.
No, sir, I don't think that at all. I'm just saying, when you're a mechai, you know, when you're a mechanic, there's some, I had to wait three weeks to get a part for a Kia. That little silver Kia sat down there for three weeks waiting for a part rack cable. You know, I, I take control stuff like that.
I don't even know what we're here for.
But I was saying, Mr. Music, what we're saying is, all the vehicles that are sitting there without tags, that are expired tags or whatever, you know, why can't you get rid of those? I don't know who they're going to, they've been sitting there a long, long time. And I, I just don't know why you can't get rid of those and give yourself the space that you need where it's supposed to be.
That wasn't why we were brought to the meeting.
Well, I'm finished. I mean, let's move on.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, I think that, uh, probably you're gonna have to, you might have to stay with the original permit for it. And Mr. Music, it is, you might have to move those cars or you're gonna have to tell him where he can park back there. We're not getting anywhere here.
That's true.
Either he moves the cars and follows the original conditional use permit or he grants a right of way through there for twenty feet or whatever. If not, then if this is, this is a moot point.
That's what I'm saying, sir.
But I just feel that where the cars are parked is not violating the original permit because they, we're not parked behind that building. We're, we're, that, that building is gone. We're, we feel like we're not in, out of compliance of the-
That'd be the case, that'd be something the town manager to address.
Mr., as you were saying, Mr. Blankship, you need, you need to need to work with Mr. Music addressing the existing permit. The other thing up to bite was no action, so there's no, there's no amendment to the original permit. So if you would work with, uh, Wayne and Kyle and address the original permit, okay?
Can we be involved and know what's gonna happen? Because we don't normally know what goes on.
I have another question. I still think, before everybody leaves, we need clarification on this original conditional use permit. It says restricted to the two buildings, which is four.
I think, well, that, Mr. Leonard, that's gonna be something that the town managers have to look at to the permit. But I, I, I may have saw it one way and other members of the planning commission may have saw it another way. I, I, I'm not trying, I don't think we can answer your question. I know what your question is, but I don't know that we have answered for that tonight.
You don't, and, and I didn't mean that holding you accountable. I'm, as a county-
I continue, Mark addressed the second building as either one that was immediately being torn, torn down.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that was my question. So, so basically, they were only in violation of the permit once the building was torn down. But from their, from the way it was originally with the vehicles where they- But from their, from the way it was originally, with the vehicles where they were now. It wouldn't have been, I wasn't here for it, so that's what I'm asking.
Well, the issue was, is that it's never been put in writing about the back of the building. Either place. It says the front and sides, that's what, if I understood what the chairman is telling us.
Back to the second building.
Yeah, so...
The second building?
Was the one that got torn down.
Okay.
That was the interpretation of Mark at the time, okay?
So are we interpreting this as that there's one building, not two buildings now, or...
Again, young man, I think that's something that's going to be up for an opinion on. And I think the town manager can probably work with both parties to see if they can come to some kind of agreement. Because I think everybody's going to have a different view on where that was the second building that was being referred to.
I can't say that that would make a difference, because the permit says side and front, parking. It doesn't say, many times about the back, whether it's first two buildings or three buildings or whatever, it just says side and...
But the second building said back, but it's torn down.
Okay, so, but still, that, that deal, but it's still in the back.
And what, what we talked about that night was not to park behind that second building. The level that's right in front of their house, uh, you know, there's a flat part up there, and that's where I understood not to park the, the second building. And if you, I've got some pictures, uh, if any of you want to come and look, we can show you where the second building was before it was torn down, and what we're talking about here. But I still agree with, I want to clean it up, I want to get that mowed, but Ron should have already pushed hogging the second time this year. It has got really deep this year, and of course, we've had a ton of rain and the weeds have grown, but, um, you know, I, I will do my best to move and anything that, that they don't like, you know, we will, we will try to alleviate that. That's my goal, but I, I can't, I just don't want to be restricted to not being able to put anything behind the building period, because I had that large box truck of Stinson's out there, that would have been very hard for me to do anything else with. That we got fixed last week, and it's gone now, but, you know, there's just some things that I need to put there.
Mr. Doherty, may I address you about this?
You sure can, Gene.
Okay, provisions of section twenty-one V two V one. Can you, uh, quote that section to me to tell me what that section says? In writing? Okay, that's what I'm asking, where does it say? Because we're going back to the minutes of this meeting, that Mr. Music said nothing would be parked, if, everything be parked in this vehicle inside or to park in front, okay? That's what my question was, was this twenty-one V two V one, which I've dealt with law all my life, does that say to the side and to the front?
The planning commission said to the side and front, when they put the restrictions...
See, that wasn't put in the minutes, we didn't know that.
They did it tonight, you all came, after the, after the public hearing. Okay. Anything else in relation to this matter? I want to thank the planning commission for being here and for your service.
Can I leave things as they are until Mr. Winkinship has a chance to come and look at it?
Yeah, that needs to happen soon, Wayne.
Okay.
He'll be to you all soon regarding the back of the property.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor.
I don't know what we're gonna...
Thank you all.
Thank, thank you. Is there anyone else here that needs to speak on, on the public part of this meeting? If, the reason I ask, it'll be, look, it's, it's down, oh, that's twelve hours.
Twelve hours?
I don't, no.
No, I have to hop, he sleeps a lot.
The reason I ask that, that being said, there's a matter that we need, I'm going to adjust, and we're going to need to go into closed session to discuss personnel at this time, and... Where can we go now, Kevin?
Maybe...
Kitchen there?
This would be part of the best, I guess.
Maintain social distancing, we need a, a motion to go into closed session under, out of section two point two dash three seven one one A, out of one person.
I'd like to make a request, Mayor. We're going, we're going into closed session, I'd also like to go in for legal also.
We can go back in, too.
We're going, we're going to go back in, okay?
Okay.
Is there, is there a motion to that?
Some is, Mayor.
There's six, a pro discussion. All those that are in the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And then hear everybody.
Aye.
Aye.
All of those say aye. Let's get into closed session, Tom, Jeffrey, which one?